All right. Good evening. Welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Miller School Committee. Tonight is also our formal budget hearing, which we do every year around this time in advance of going and presenting our budget to the Finance Committee and then on to ultimately the recommendation at town meeting. I will start by roll call vote or roll call of attendance. So I am Mark Conroy. I am here. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Steve Catalano. He is here, so he might be on mute.
Mark, I'm here. Sorry, I was on mute.
Denise Givens.
Here.
Carrie Roach.
Here.
We have Teacher Representative Riley Dunn.
Here.
And Student Representative Dory Stefanowitz.
Here.
And Superintendent Nancy Gustafson.
I'm here.
All right. Before we get into anything else, I obviously want to acknowledge and note the news from the governor this morning or afternoon, early afternoon, right at noon, I guess, for the closing of all schools for the remainder of the year. This has obviously been something that's been kind of on people's minds and has been seeming more and more likely as the last couple of weeks have gone on. But now that it's official, we will be getting further guidance from the Department of Education throughout this week on what exactly or any changes to what the online learning situation should look like for the remainder of the year. Really, given the announcement just came out today, there's really not a lot more to give as an update other than what people saw on the news today. I have and the superintendent is going to work over the next few weeks with to see how other districts are handling one topic of letting people back into the building to get things. So whether that's staff or and students. Obviously, personally, I don't see that happening in the next couple of weeks until there's some alleviation of restrictions, but that is a piece that the administration will be working on and understanding and we'll get that communicated out. Other end of year celebration ceremonies are also topics for discussion such as graduation of what that could look like. Obviously, at a postponed date. So those things are have already been under consideration and now that we finally have word that we won't be back this year, those will progress again in a timeframe that allows us to manage whatever social restrictions and however long those go on. Nancy, do you want to add anything else on that?
No, other than we are awaiting the detailed guidance that will come out later this week and next week. And already are planning, but some of the things we don't have answers for yet and a lot of it will take some discussions with the administrative team.
All right. Then with that, I'll go to announcements from, we'll start with our student representatives. So Dory, go ahead.
The class of 2020 has an Instagram page to let everyone know where the seniors are going to college and replacement for the college board in the school. Everyone is loving Mr. Malini's Google Classroom page with encouraging messages and fun quizzes to earn Millis shirts and other cool things. Various clubs are meeting online with Google meets to spread positivity, just like Happiness Club. Online learning is definitely keeping students busy. The AP tests are going to be happening at home in May and teachers are working really hard to keep in touch with students for school-related and non-school-related things. We're all working together to make this all work. We all miss our teachers, our friends and our school.
Thanks, Dory.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question? Dory, do you know what that Instagram page is if we want to take a look at it?
It is. Let me find it.
Sorry.
Millis MHS class of 2020 underscore.
Thank you.
No worries.
All right. How about teacher representatives? Riley?
Sure. @ClydeBrown, remote learning is working successfully. Teachers report that most students are completing some, if not all, of the must-do assignments and are joining weekly face-to-face meetings, either as small group or full class. Teachers put together a miss you slideshow and a welcome to Hannah slideshow, which were well received thanks to Anne Willusi, Pat Grinchelli, Jim Hulos for putting it together and Mark Feminow for the musical accompaniment. The work on the CFP parking lot is near completion and the tennis court is underway. For the middle school and high school, the first virtual workshop for Unified Arts was hosted today. Millis TV teacher Danielle Mannion arranged this virtual workshop with Amy Pijanowski, the Netflix animation executive. Amy has worked on the Tinkerbell movies at Disney, Bob's Burgers, Scooby Doo, and she is an animation executive at Netflix. She's a Millis High School graduate and she met with students and staff from the middle school and high school. Mohawk Post, our school newspaper, now has its own Google site for current student news. Check it out and read some of the latest at-home posts from our students. The link will be shared out via listserv. And our Engineer Your World course is currently designing face masks from home for their capstone project. Some news from the health office and the nurses. Diane and Lynn are working with the Millis Board of Health doing COVID-19 documentation on Maven, the Surveillance and Outbreak Management Program used by MassDPH. This requires daily calls to positive COVID cases and all of their recent close contacts. The nurses are also completing documentation for the incoming school year kindergarten class, updating protocols and developing a Millis Health Office website. And Terpsichery is still rehearsing for the spring recital, albeit virtually. Each piece meets once a week and Miss Coe piece plays the music and the dancers dance at home. They know that they don't know when the show will be, but it's nice to keep dancing. That's everything.
Great. Thanks, Riley. All right. Our only action item tonight is consideration to approve the April 7 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the Miller School Committee April 7, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Next, we're going to move to the main item on the agenda, our budget proposal. One thing I do want to mention, I know individuals that are out in the audience, one, thank you for tuning in. Second, with if you have a question, if you could type in the chat function, we will monitor that through and then address questions. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. So I will turn it over to the superintendent for our fiscal '21 budget hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first want to thank everyone, the students, the staff, food service staff, continuing to feed families, administrators, and especially the teaching staff for responding so positively to this challenge of the past month and and moving forward to figure out how we can serve our students best in the coming months. The Millis Schools and Community have really stepped up. We've had a number of people offer donations to our food service program. I want to reiterate that the meals are free to anyone who has students in the Millis Public Schools and we offer them on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays from 7:30 to 10:30. Each day you can pick up two days of meals, both breakfast and lunch, and then on Fridays, there are three days of meals. So please take advantage of that. And it actually helps our budget because the more meals we serve, the more reimbursement we can get to. One of our goals as a school and school committee is to retain as many people working as we can. Many people have stepped forward. We have a family that is has taken the 3D printers to their house and we're printing the little attachments that are very important for nurses and those wearing the health professionals wearing masks because these relieve the pressure of the that is around your ears as you're wearing the mask for so many hours. So we printed over 100 of those for Tufts Health Medical and we're starting on a new batch for other probably local hospitals. So I want to thank Mary Ellen Despinosa for reaching out to us with the idea and Molly Kennedy and her family and many other people who made this happen. So there's a lot of good. The budget season is a challenge because we have put together a proposed budget that will probably be looked very different by the end of June or maybe even in July when it gets approved once the state acts and local revenue, et cetera, are all factored into the equation. But we have gone through the same development, budget development process that we always do. We start in December. We determine our fixed costs and what our critical needs are. February and then in March, we develop a draft budget, taking into consideration the governor's projected budget and projected town revenue. Normally that would go through a process with the Senate and House and then a conference committee, but they've collapsed that process and at the state level are trying to reach consensus on how to move forward. The governor's budget only provided Millis with $30. There's $30 per pupil increase. So it was a minimal increase we received. In April and May, we present this public hearing to the school committee and the public and then the Finance Committee and we continue to monitor those funding sources that I mentioned, both the state and local levels. And then we are not sure yet if there will be enough information for approving a budget at the June town meeting. Town meeting having been moved to, I think it's June 8th. But hopefully that will be true. In our budget development, we have some basic premises that we have always planned from. First and foremost is meet the needs of our students and align to a few priorities that we think are powerful priorities in Millis. We endeavor to maintain and improve the education we provide in Millis and are always looking to identify not only our strengths but opportunities for efficiencies and ways that we can improve. One of our basic premises is that it all works in Millis because of excellent staffing. And I'll speak to that more later when we get to the budget breakdown. But it really is staffing is the most important aspect and hiring excellent staff and retaining excellent staff is essential. And then we want to retain and attract students. So because enrollment is a big driver for our budget and I'll speak to that a little bit later, too. I think everybody knows in Millis, one of the things that we are focused on is personalizing our learning. And because of this, we actually were pretty well positioned to begin remote blended learning because we've always had technology in service of learning, had blended learning that was partially learning using Google Classroom or it's learning, a learning management system. And we believe that the power of personalized learning comes from actually developing very strong relationships with our students and with our families. We do have exemplary programs and we do provide a very high quality. Just today, or I think it was today or yesterday, we received news that we made the top list in U.S. News and World Report again for our high school. We have been very fortunate to have public support and opened a gorgeous new building that serves our mission and our vision well of providing 21st century skill education with an emphasis on real-world authentic learning. And the new building, Clyde Brown Building, really does make that possible. And of course, we're very anxious to get back in that building. We try to be as responsive to students' individual needs as possible. So our priorities are always to maximize the well-being and the learning of students. SEL is social emotional learning. That is a foundational aspect that unless that is in a very good place and a strong foundation, then the rest of learning is much more difficult. So during the early phases of remote learning, especially, we focused on connecting, maintaining relationships, checking in with students, social emotional learning is a very, very important focus in Millis and has always been. We screen for social emotional learning attributes three times a year and try to develop ways and support systems to help students. Along with that, we are engaged in having students own their own learning more. And especially with 21st century skills I've talked about, those are sometimes called soft skills, but they really are what makes for success in life, whether it be interpersonal skills, but also problem-solving, critical thinking and interpersonal relationships, teamwork, all of those go into a very strong education. We this past year have been really working on increasing the number of real-world opportunities for students. I think Riley mentioned the engineering course and their capstone project. And so that's a perfect example of real-world learning and it happens to be in the STEAM area, which is science, technology, engineering, art and mathematics. Very much a project-based approach, but applying knowledge and doing some real critical thinking and problem-solving versus just learning content without having a real-world connection. So the challenges we're facing in addition to COVID-19 are basically can be summed up by a lack of revenue. Our Chapter 70 funding has has been flat, as I mentioned, that it's been 20 or 25 and this year proposed $30 per student for a long time in terms of state funding. And our lower enrollment because of low birth rates in town, lower enrollment has a big impact and I'll show some graphs on that later. Social, emotional and mental health issues are a big part of what schools across the nation are seeing as challenging and we're dealing with more and more mental health issues every year in our student population. And then Millis really does have inadequate athletic fields and recreational fields as a town. And that remains a problem for our students. We have some superb track, team members that have done really marvelous things, but without a track. And so I really think it's, I can only imagine what they would be able to achieve if they had a track. Enrollment, as you can see, at our about eight years ago in 2010, 11, we had about 300 more students than we have now. For a while, the economy impacted that and a lack of housing stock. But now that is changing and we expect for that trend to go up. And this is very important because from the state in our Chapter 70 funding, we receive almost $11,000 per pupil. So that 300 fewer students has a huge impact on our budget. The nice thing about low enrollment is lovely class sizes. So you can see, except for fifth grade, we have ideal, really beautiful class sizes that are small and that helps with our personalization and meeting students' individual needs. School choice revenue is another aspect of the revenue that we count on to help pay some salaries. That has gone up tremendously. We have about 50 more students than 13 years ago and that each student brings in approximately $5,000 in revenue. And since they're spread throughout the district with only a few at each grade level sprinkled through, they do not require, it does not require us to hire additional staffing, but it does bring in revenue. We have approximately the salaries of six teachers that we are paying out of choice. And then students choicing out of Millis has remained relatively stable for the past eight years, around 30 to 34 students. And that is an outflow of revenue for every student who chooses to choice elsewhere. That impacts the town of Millis. Charter school enrollment remains low fortunately because that is also impacts our budget. And private and homeschool has gone up a little bit in the past couple of years. We're not sure, but we think it partially due to the improving economy and the ability to pay private school tuition. Homeschool has remained fairly stable with only about nine students being homeschooled. Another impact to our budget and the town's budget are the increasing numbers of students going to Tri-County and Norfolk Aggie. For vocational schools, they receive over $18,000 per pupil from the town of Millis for every student who attends. And vocational schools have evolved, so they are now offering much more of a program that is more akin to a traditional college-bound program versus staying with the trades that they originally were created for. So they are able to offer more traditional offerings and AP classes, but we in the local schools are do not have the funding to offer the vocational programs that they offer because we get almost half as much as the vocational schools do per pupil. In Millis, our pupil expenditure has increased. A couple of years ago, you'd see us closer to the left-hand side of the graph, but it's not due to greater revenue necessarily. It's just that it's now spread out over fewer students, 300 fewer students. So we're now, this is our surrounding town comparison. We're not much lower than the state average and we're about in the middle of our surrounding towns. But an impact is that while we have, it looks like a better budget, it's really just a matter of being spread over fewer students, but not enough that we can actually reduce a teacher at each grade level, although that has gradually happened over time. And instead of five teachers at every grade level in the elementary school, we now have four teachers at every grade level except for one grade. So our per pupil expenditures compared to comparable districts, sometimes called the DART districts, which is on the Department of Education website, you can compare to DART, which are smaller, small districts with similar demographics. So you can see what's Bridgewater, Lunenburg, Abington, Sutton, Douglas, Georgetown, Millbury, Millis and Air. Those are considered our comparable districts and Millis is slightly higher than the majority of those. And again, comparable districts, this includes our out-of-district students and the tuitions we're paying for out-of-district special education. But our position didn't really move much. The only change is that from one graph to the next is that Millbury jumped over us to be higher than the state average. Excuse me. In comparison to our surrounding districts, Millis has about 11% students who are low, considered low income. They changed the way they calculated this a few years ago. I think it's an under-representation of the number of families in Millis that actually are struggling economically, but it is the official representation now. So in Millis, we've had several years of budget reductions. We've I think done very well considering we've had such tight budgets. We have reduced our expenses over time to try to retain the excellent staff that we have. As I said, the staff really are the essential piece of a quality education. And so we are very tight on all our expenses. In the past, we've had to make reductions in our staffing levels in FY '16, '17 and '19. And we'll be looking at how we can weather the upcoming loss of revenue at the state and local levels as well and seeing with our goal of retaining excellent staff and excellent programming. Our total budget, 80, almost 84% of it is in salaries. Not much in transportation, special education overall, a little over 7%. Maintenance, energy and expenses are low. It is a very people-intensive endeavor as it should be. And of those salaries, 70% of our salaries are our teachers. You can see administration is about 9%. Paraprofessionals, tutors and other therapists, about 5%, maintenance about 4%. So in taking our last year's budget, which was $15,856,644, we then determine what our cost of living raises are in the contracts. And most of those contracts also have a step. So there's a cost of living and a step for experience. So step one is for usually a first-year teacher and step two would be what they'd receive in their second year. Our steps on our teacher salary scale are now standardized at 4%. The lanes, our teachers are required to get master's degrees and we have lanes beyond that as well. So what we've done is taken a look at the, the total amount of lanes that teachers have applied to achieve next year. And then we've reduced that by about fifty percent because we know that in any given year, about fifty percent of our staff will make those lane changes. But we, if we were to fully fund it, that would have been an additional sixty thousand dollars. So one of our goals here, as you can see at the bottom of this page, the total salary increase is four point five four percent. And in discussion with the selectmen and the Fin, Finance Committee, in projecting, this was pre-COVID nineteen, we had agreed that we would try to bring in a budget at a four percent increase so as to manage the increase over to a level that could be funded with the available revenue. So reducing our lanes by fifty percent is one of the ways we did so. We also, in this, we have a reduction, ideally a reduction of salaries that are funded by choice. As I mentioned, we have about six teacher salaries coming out of choice right now. But ideally, choice is a fund that you would want to use for one-time purchases, such as in a curriculum adoption. We do not have a curriculum line, so choice could be a place, if we didn't have to use it for salaries, that we could fund our curriculum from. Or some needed equipment or repairs that come up unexpectedly. Those all would be very appropriate uses of a choice fund. So we're trying to reduce our reliance on choice for salaries. That said, given the new situation, we'll have to take a look at that and see if we'll be able to do that. Right now, with this reduction of a hundred thou, a hundred and one thousand, our choice, the salaries funded out of choice roughly equals the revenue we receive and are expected to receive next year for choice students. We also have a cost here for a transition program for eighteen to twenty-two-year-old special needs students. These are students that are here in Milis and one or two that are in out-of-district placements in the age group of eighteen to twenty-two that have some significant disabilities. And we are required by law to serve them and educate them until they're twenty-two. So a transition program helps them with their life skills and employability skills so that they can actually become more independent and hold down a job. If we start this program and we are collaborating with Medfield Public Schools for this program because they have the space and we don't, but we have vans that can be utilized for the program and they don't, so it, it works out very well. It would, it would add a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand. However, if we do not start this program and fund it with Medfield, then we would be paying out-of-district tuitions for these students of about a hundred and fifty-two thousand. So there is a thirty-two thousand dollar cost savings if we bring this internally in district instead of paying out-of-district tuitions to another agency to educate these students. So it's another, another instance of a creative way that our special education department is trying to reduce costs, but provide very high-quality programming. We do need to increase the speech and language professional at Clyde Brown by, she's currently point nine and we need to move her up to a one-point-oh FTE. So that's a point one increase of about nine thousand dollars because of the higher caseload numbers of students at Clyde Brown that need speech therapy, speech and language therapy. We do have one retiree with a savings, a hiring savings of about forty thousand dollars for a total salary increase of seven hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, which is a four-point-five-four increase. However, we have some good news in terms of our out-of-district tuitions are not going up by much as long as we fund the transition program. And then, and, and let me be clear that the only reason those are going up is because private schools, special education schools can raise their tuition costs a lot each year and collaboratives less so. But that is just not, this is a, an increase to tuition rather than more kids going out of district. We are able to prepay tuitions each year with our savings from various small places. We are able to prepay tuitions, which is a great offset to help with our budget next year. We did have a two percent, initially a two percent increase would have been fifty-three thousand dollar increase in expenditures. But as usual, the expense increase is not usually funded because we were trying to bring in a budget at four percent. And then there are about seventeen thousand dollars worth of new costs that are required for funding. The ZERUS is our Wi-Fi network. Munis is the joint conversion to Munis and with the town, which is a very important endeavor that, that we're, oh, working on hard. I'd say the business office is working hard at that. And then we do have one software program at Clyde Brown for the smart boards there, the interactive smart boards that we need to fund this year. It was included. We need to fund it next year. It was included in the construction costs this year. So overall, this is a savings of eighty-five thousand dollars, which then brings our total to a four percent increase of six hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-seven. I would call it a level staff budget. I would not call it a level service budget because we have had to make those reductions in expenses. So the research on high-performing organizations and learning organizations, especially schools, say, say that we need these seven things. We need guaranteed and viable curriculum, which we do with our power standards, clear instructional vision, but with the professional development to support that. Deep implementation of a few goals, not too many, and stay focused on, a laser-like focus on, on what we're doing in Milis, which is personalizing learning. You need to have highly qualified staff and they all need to be focused on improvement, which are all of ours are collaborative learning and planning. This has been one of the things we're known for and adamant about is it's all about the team and the team planning and a team approach here in Milis. And then we need to support and challenge all students, social emotional learning, English language learners, students with disabilities, low income. Every single student needs challenge as well as the support to reach their goals. And then parenting, community involvement, which has been really wonderful. So there are several, in fact, there are thirteen identified needs beyond our basic base budget, a level staff, level service budget. And the two most, two, two of them, I'd say this top one is very important is, well, they're, they're both important. But the Bridge Counselor is a program at the high school that we want to expand to the eighth grade as well. And it really saves money in the long run because it's a program that addresses the needs of students with low attendance and low student engagement or physical health issues such as coming back from a hospitalization. It could be for mental health concerns, not always. It could be due to athletic injuries. So it is a cost, a preventative program that's had great success. So in order for, for that counselor to go from point six-five to one-point-oh would cost eleven thousand dollars. We do have now twenty-nine English language learners in our schools. And we need to figure out ways to serve them better and educate them so that they can attain academic literacy. The critical needs, the first one is really a program that we believe also will save money in the long run. And that's to create a DECA class and a DECA program. DECA is a business and marketing program with an entrepreneurial focus. And both of my children are in a program in a neighboring district. It really is a wonderful way to increase real-world skills, a lot of business skills and application of skills in various internships or business visits, et cetera. So for a very low cost, we think that we can perhaps attract some students who might be looking at a vocational school and we could retain them by offering the DECA class and the DECA program here, here in Milis. There, we have always, as I mentioned, the increase in the school adjustment counselor, the social, emotional, mental health needs are there. We have more students at Clyde Brown now with fifth grade moving there. So we do have, the proposal is ideally to go from point six to a point eight counselor. We, we have a literacy study, oops, sorry, going on at Clyde Brown because we're not happy with our MCAS scores in grade three and grade five reading in English Language Arts. So we've, we're in the midst of a literacy study and two or three of these will address the professional development and the curriculum development needed to, to improve our scores and to improve how we're teaching reading and increase the capacity of our teachers to do so in a better way. We, the next, we've never had curriculum material line item in our budget. We've always had to go to town, town meeting to ask for a warrant for a major adoption of curriculum. And it really should be in our budget. So we're suggesting that we start at least with ten thousand this year and gradually increase that if we, if we can, rather than having to go to town meeting and request curriculum materials as warrant articles. And then several years ago, we lost funding for professional development funds. And this year, for example, all of our funds were, were accounted for or slated to be spent for workshops and other things for teachers by the fall. And this is an important area for teacher growth and we have not been able to fund the professional development that they would like to receive. Again, we have some other clerical needs for the technology department especially. So we have a modest, modest increase proposed there. Tears, the Tears program is individualized, small group and individualized support for students. And at Clyde Brown with grade five going to the elementary setting, we would like to expand that if the funding were available. I mentioned the literacy study. They will come out with recommendations. Point four, reading specialist is potentially one of their recommendations, but we don't have any reading specialist at the middle school to help with students who are still struggling with re, reading when they get there. And middle school also, we, we have a class that's been taught by our grade eight science teacher that is not a sustainable model because he gives up his, his team time to do so. So we'd love to continue the engineering program. And you may have seen pictures of some of the things they build, video games, et cetera. It's a great program. The summer Tears support is needed. It'll be, again, we'll, we'll see if any of this is possible in a, in a pared-down budget. And then finally, at the high school, we would like to create an outdoor learning maker space and learning area. Clyde Brown has several spaces. And if we were to make something outside, it could be a place where kids are able to build things and really do some large projects that wouldn't be able to be in a classroom. And that would be in the courtyard. And we were thinking it would be great to have a, some local business partners also help with that. So if we were to fund all of these core and critical needs, it would be a five-point-four increase instead of four percent. The capital needs, the, are funded by free cash at town meeting. There's very little free cash this year, so the top three are the must-fund leases. They, they will, it looks like they will be funded, but the bottom four warrant articles that we have put forth, I don't think there's the free cash to cover those, but they are needed. So finally, the, it is obviously going to be a challenging budget situation. With the governor's announcement, we're all mourning the, the loss of, of end-of-year activities, et cetera. We will plan on how best we can do some creative things to help kids celebrate and have some closure and have some connection with their classmates before the end of the school year. And it, it is, I'm convinced that if anybody can meet the challenge, the Milis teachers and Milis staff can do so, but it clearly isn't an ideal situation. And we will get, be getting information out as soon as we get further, further guidance from the Department of Education. Any questions?
Great. Thanks Nancy. I don't have any specific questions. I do want to make one comment and this is more so for people seeing. This year, we did something this year in terms of the budget presentation and proposal that we haven't done in years past. And that was to come down to a flat four, four percent requested increase. And that, as Nancy mentioned in her presentation, was something that we have been working on through tri-board meetings with the Select Board and the Finance Committee in terms of how, how the town's revenue is allocated. And, and as people may, may or may not know, historically, after a series of fixed costs like health insurance and, and level funding the prior year's budgets across the town. and, and level funding the, the prior year's budgets across the town, any remaining revenue was split proportionally between the school and the, and the town municipal budgets as a whole. And that math worked out to be, was sixty-five, thirty-five in terms of splitting new revenue. What, what that formula didn't do was really leave to, leave any for addressing town-wide capital needs in a, in a strategic way. And so the proposal that I, I know the finance committee is still working towards, again, pre-COVID nineteen budget implications, was to cap operating budget growth at four percent, which was historically what we've, what we've been able to do and what we've had to manage to in the past. And this year, we're, we're doing it more purposefully. And then what would happen is if there was revenue that would be in excess of, of that four percent growth, that money would be then discussed at the finance committee level and, and in collaboration with the select board and the school committee as to what additional needs may, may be funded. So that, you know, given new developments and businesses online that have, that have come into town and new revenue streams, the expectation is that we would have more than four percent revenue coming into the town. And so we agreed and believe that if the finance committee does recommend what its intention was at the end of this process of four percent growth and then investing in capital or other critical needs, that that really should be supportive. And it's a, it's a good approach. Again, with COVID nineteen, if that does change, we don't, we don't know any, we don't know that it will. The closest thing probably that this is akin to in recent years is the, when the economy collapsed in two thousand and eight. And back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, what ended up happening when cities and towns and states had the significant revenue shortfalls, there were stimulus money that came in from the federal government. And it came in and, in, passed through the state, but it came in and in essence allowed cities and towns to by and large balance itself, making up for the, the revenue, the revenue loss. And those were temporary stopgaps that, that came in for three years in terms of stimulus funding. Obviously, we don't know where this is all going to shake out in the coming months, but that's at least one reference point as to potentially what, what could happen in this situation. So I think at this point, the school committee is taking an approach of, we're gonna, we're moving forward with the expectation of a four percent growth and that's the presentation we saw tonight. This time I'll open it up to any questions from any other committee members. Any other comments? I'm not seeing, again, anybody in the public. If you have a question, feel free to type it into the chat. All right, I don't see any. All right, so Nancy, thank you again for the presentation. We will be presenting this to the finance committee next Wednesday night on the twenty-ninth. And so that will, is the, then the budget presentation. So going to the next item on the agenda is the chairman's report. I guess I, I just want to also acknowledge that and recognize in, in addition to managing the COVID situation and, and dealing on a daily basis with the logistics of the new school, Nancy communicated last week publicly that she has decided to retire. Next December first will be her retirement date. And I just wanted to take a minute and one, thank Nancy now for everything she's done in the last fourteen years. We've still got a few more months to go and obviously, as we get closer, we will publicly discuss that more. I do also want to acknowledge and appreciate Nancy has been very forthcoming with the committee about this. And we've been working with her for a number of months to, to lay this all out and to make sure that between, from announcement to December first, that we will keep everything rolling and moving in, in a way that's in the best interest of the district. So, thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is subcommittee reports. Is there an, any report from the elementary school building committee?
Mark, Denise is muted, she's gonna have to be unmuted by Dave if she wants to say something. Give Dave a minute. He's having trouble unmuting Denise.
Right, so Denise says that there are no updates, they're, they're meeting tonight as well.
Thanks, Robin.
There we go.
Thanks Denise.
Oh, there we go, thanks Dave, sorry.
There we go, all right.
Yeah, so what Robin said, they're, they're, they're meeting actually as we speak. And I think Riley talked about it, that they're working on parking lot and tennis courts. So those are really the, the big updates for right now. They, they are putting in a water pump booster, a water booster for the water pressure. So that's one of the bigger things. So that's something that the committee approved at the last meeting. That was one of the open items from the opening of the school, which was the water pressure and folks not being happy with what that water pressure was looking like throughout the building. So they voted on to approve a booster, so that'll go in by the end of this school year.
All right, cool, thank you. Back to the agenda. I don't think we have any other, don't have any older new business. No correspondence. And we actually do not have anything for executive session tonight. So I would then, for, then take a, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we take the vote, again, I'd just like to thank everybody for tuning in to this tonight. And hopefully this has been helpful for you guys. And if you have any other questions, again, feel, feel free to reach out to the, to administrators, whether it's individual school principals, teachers, et cetera, as we go through the next couple of months. So, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you all, have a good night.